One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Christiane, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Feis.
Here.
Mrs. Hedley.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mrs. Janicek.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Scowzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Mojek.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that on today, on April 8th here, we had executive session covering legal and personnel matters. At this time, we're gonna have a presentation for our facilities reuse subcommittee. I'm gonna step up and Mrs. Walsh and I are gonna be on that side.
Different to be on this side. The subcommittee that was put together when Mr. Christensen was, at the time, the chair, was to look at the reuse of the current elementary buildings, NAMs, possibly even this building. So they did not sit, like those of us remember Logan sat for a very long time. Like, I went to school, I went to college, I moved back and Logan's school was still there. Same with Park Avenue. So that's the purpose. You already know about two of them. We're gonna give you some options again tonight for several others. Do you wanna start with Memorial?
Let's introduce.
Okay, let me introduce the subcommittee first. Mr. Andy Amrind, Mr. Jim Jenkins, Mr. Tim Mari, Mr. Joe Consigno, Mr. John Lorenzi, Mr. Justin Goodelli, and Mr. Mike Festuka, and Mr. Raspicuza. And not here tonight is Justin Pramprio, who's also on the committee. Who wants to start?
So just, one of our goals, as we got together as a group, and knowing the situation we're in with the construction and the opening of the new school is, how do we sit there and look at these buildings that we have available to us? And what is the best interest of the school district? And more important, what is the best interest of the community as a whole? So we'll have two of our colleagues come up here tonight and kinda give a little rundown from their perspective and their experience on the why the suggestions we are to move forward as a school district. So, Mr. Molly?
And then somebody else will chime in.
Thank you, sir.
It is more fun on this side, just so you know. No, thank you. First off, I just wanna thank this board, the administration, the previous board, for their courage to stand up once they made a decision on decentralizing one school is what to do with the remaining schools. Number one is, I don't wanna show my age, but I recall what happened many years ago with Park Avenue and what happened with Logan, that there was decisions made on the schools on closing them, and they'd had no plans for what to do with them. So in many cases, the buildings sit vacant, become an eyesore, become a code enforcement, as well as a financial drag on the school district. So number one, I do wanna thank you for taking this initiative to put this group together. Once the decision was made to consolidate into one building, is what to do with the other facilities that are out there. And the number one issue that came up, or the number one directive that the group got, was what suits the community? What are the needs of our community was the number one priority. Two years ago, I guess, a little more than two years ago, the municipality depends a lot on the school district for use of facilities for our recreation program. Not just the gyms and indoors, but the outdoors, the fields. And I think we're very fortunate that the municipality and the school district have a really good working relationship on many aspects, but in particular on recreation. Cause in many communities, the two elected bodies don't always get together and work together. They're more kind of adversaries. So I think the leadership on both sides came together. And we first looked at the municipal needs with our recreational programs. And we knew going to one facility, we're gonna lose field space and we were gonna lose gym time. So Mr. Consigno and Mr. Jenkins were part of the group that really looked at what the municipality, what their needs are, not just for what we had, but all our recreational groups. And I believe it's two years ago, being August, when there's an agreement between the school district and municipality to take over Ben Franklin and Washington, I believe, schools. And really to preserve for green space, for parks, for, you know, recreational opportunities. I think at the time, the discussion was to take the buildings down and then come up with a master plan on what to do, so we can maintain those facilities. So one of the things the group also did is started to look at the other buildings and what to do and where the community, where the needs are. And we reached out, maybe Andy can touch upon a little bit, about the groups and the vision that this group had and the different people we brought in. We left no stone unturned. The group's been meeting for, I guess, close to three years now. We've toured the facilities, we've met with a lot of different groups, we've listened to proposals. Hopefully now we're refining it, we're getting it done to a point where we have a pretty solid recommendation on what we can suggest. We understand it's the board's decision ultimately on what happens here. But I think it was really great to see community input. The group I'm working with has been great. Some of them are here tonight, or most are here tonight. And they've spent a lot of time and dedicated to Bethel Park people as they come in. And they're like, what can we do to make Bethel Park better? So hopefully you're gonna see some of the things we have planned, some of the ideas. And we look forward to working with you. And like I said, number one, I'll go back to where I started, is we do appreciate the district and the leadership you've shown on really looking at the community and trying to address needs we have out there with the facilities we're not gonna be using. So thank you.
Hi, thanks, Tim. I just wanna agree with Tim. This has been, I thoroughly enjoyed this entire process. And I'm thrilled that the board itself put together, not just this committee, but starting back quite a few years ago, when Dr. Walsh asked me to be on part of the strategic plan. And I'm like, why in the world would I wanna do that? The time and energy and everything that it took to put that together. But after we moved forward with it, it was a eye-opening experience for me, along with hundreds of people in the community that got together to be part of that strategic plan. And as you know, I'm in the community a lot. I talk to a lot of people. I do a lot of speaking engagements around, not just Bethel Park, but all over Pittsburgh. And in talking to the community is doing that strategic plan, it really pushed the idea of the single elementary center, but then on top of it, what are we gonna do with the rest of the other properties and the buildings itself? So after the strategic plan was put into place and this amazing committee was put together with these individuals and meeting as often as we have, and still talking to the people in the community, it really showed us the path that we wanted to do for the community and guide the school board into making the decisions that are best, not just for the school district, but for the community itself. And like Tim was saying, that the two schools that are, the property's gonna be in the hands of the municipality, the rest are the other buildings. But the William Penn and Lincoln, it have been earmarked to be auctioned off. And the buildings go to the different builders, developers, as to what they plan on doing with it. But part of the strategic plan was to help secure funds for the district, not just for the general funds, but for the facilities. And part of the facilities committee itself was trying to help ensure that the district has the money to maintain the rest of the school district itself and the buildings. So having those properties auctioned and having the district maintain the money for it, for the facilities, is huge for the general funds and well-being of the district itself. And one of the most outstanding things that came out of it was the Memorial School property itself. And the idea that that stay a building, stay in the district's hands for anything that may develop, but also being used and rented to nonprofit organizations for adult daycare, youth daycare, the Meals on Wheels programs, and different items that the district really, really needs. So it's not just selling a building, renting a building to whoever or whatever the biggest bidder is. It's actually using the facilities for the betterment of the community and the betterment of the school district itself. So I've really enjoyed working on not just the facility side of it, but also on the strategic plan side of it, going back many years ago. And I just wanna, like Tim said, I wanna thank this board. I've born and raised in Bethel Park. I've been here 65 years, graduated in 78. And I have to say, I have really enjoyed working with this board itself. You ladies and gentlemen, my hat's off to you. You are doing a fabulous job for this district and this community. And I'll continue to help whenever asked, as long as you remember bedtime seven o'clock. So other than that, thank you very much. And the board's here to answer any questions you may have for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. One of the things that Andy brought up was about Memorial School. As in our process, we were approached by a service provider here, and Andy touched base on the adult daycare. As we know, we have a very high senior citizen population in this community. And one of the providers is a Christ Methodist Church up there on Highland Road in Bethel Park. Actually, the only one has an adult daycare. And according to the pastor Morgan up there, that their numbers have gone through the ceiling. They don't have no more space. And the timing of it, he had kinda heard about it through his networking and our networking, is that the possibility a building would come open. And then we had multiple conversations. We're still in the process of getting things finalized with them. Because in that partnership, you're also gonna see a relationship with SHIM, which our community has already have. And we're also looking to, and another partner is with the Jefferson Foundation, which we just had a little tour meeting with them over this weekend. So that was part of the goal, was been stated here earlier, is how do we serve our community best? So to repeat, we have Washington and Ben Franklin, which we already did publicly here, goes over to the municipality for their uses in a recreational program. We reviewed all the other buildings. That includes this administration building and also includes Neil Armstrong, how it's in its future. We thought there may be a future outside the district for this building, but based on our panel here and some of other experts we brought in to take a look at it, and working with our own staff, and I'm gonna speak out for Dr. Kozinski himself specifically, we come to the realization that this is an asset that's gonna be kept in the district. It needs some work done to it, there's no doubt about it. But it's an asset we wanna keep here in the district. Also along those lines, it came about to Neil Armstrong and its future. We have a service provider that provides daycare program or preschool and after-school programming. They kinda approached us also about what their future would be within the district. And we kinda did a walkthrough at Neil Armstrong. It meets a lot of their needs, which again, it meets our families' needs and our students' needs. So we're working on developing a formal relationship with that group, with Lois Johnson, to sit there when the school opens to then accommodate their needs, to help our families and help our students, providing with a good, safe location. Also with that too, going back to the feasibility study we did, Neil Armstrong, even though it's age, it's, we're told, its structure is still very good. But it has a few problems, as we come realize this past week on the third floor, and we're working on. But it's worth an investment, because again, it has a good bones, it gives a good structure, and also meets some other needs within the community, AKA our recreational needs with a nice gym down there. And we're also looking for other uses for internally within some of our program, or for any extracurricular activities. And we're trying to develop some more partnerships. So repeating, also, we found that the best market at this time for public, and I'm repeating what's said before, was William Penn and Abraham Lincoln. We've had developers approach us and say, hey, what's your future plan for that? We see a future for us. And again, we have to go through our process and say, well, more than likely, we'll put it up for auction, which we will work through the legal process to get to that point. And that's probably the next steps we have to go through, as we kinda discuss, is with the state Department of Education rules are along those lines, and through the auction process. Dr. Kozinski's done some preliminary work on that, to get in those steps ready to go. And I don't know if we have a concrete date yet to say when these things take place, but I think by the end of this school year, we will have concrete dates in regards to our public meetings and some auction dates that we will have available for the public to go for these properties. So, any other anyone to add?
I think that's, those are the committee's recommendations to all of you. Again, you know, there's the ability of Dr. Kozinski to do additional research. I know that people have reached out. There were a lot of people that have reached out. To more, the gentleman and Jess, who is not here, sitting in the audience, about options, and can we come present, and can we come talk to you, and can we tour? Which was really good, because that means Bethel Park is a community that people still wanna come to and wanna come into. And that was the whole goal of the committee, is what's best for the community. So.
Any questions from our colleagues? Yes, Mrs. Janicek.
Thank you, thank you all. I love the ideas for the properties. I think those are things, definitely. And particularly, obviously, George Washington and Ben Franklin, because things change significantly in a very short time with fields and gyms. I think my questions are about ownership of the property? Ownership, renting it, someone purchasing it, who's maintaining it? What are the ongoing costs to the district? Like, those kinds of things.
Those need to be worked out.
Right. Because, I mean, originally, when we had all talked about the future of the buildings, it was important that we sell them to regain some funds, as well as eliminate that ongoing maintenance and utilities and all those things. So for me, I think that is the biggest question.
So, to respond to the board, really this is tied to a timeline. I'm not gonna put any pressure on Maserato RC, but it really is pivotal to when we get into the building because of logistics and transition and things of that nature. Some of the things that we're gonna have to consider, one, it'll go to our facilities committee and we start doing our internal due diligence. Some of the things that we have to consider, insurance companies will not insure us if our buildings are empty. And so that's a really big factor, even if we had a security guard there, you know, for vandalism, whatever happens. The other one is that we really have to be prepared for market shifts. We had appraisals done 2022. And so we wanna make sure that we present our properties to the best ability to get whatever revenue it is and wherever we put that, whether it's debt service, down payment, or paying for X, Y, and Z. We really just have to be cognizant of, again, no pressure RC, is that whether it's the July 29th date, because there are contracts that are gonna be involved that will really have to, we're at the point where now it's, we're gonna be meeting with lawyers and lawyers to put down lease agreements and things of that nature. Because the district really doesn't wanna be in, I would not recommend being in the landlord business.
Right.
So that we're not holding the liability of that, but still supporting the community. So.
Right.
So that's where we are gonna go next to committee, is to start looking at those dotting your i's and crossing your t's.
Right. And I think the only question I have about the potential uses for NAMs, not so much with Lois Johnson, because people coming to drop off and pick up, obviously by definition are not there when school's in session. But considering the parking situation there, if we're having a lot of activities at that school, which we probably will, because it would be, we don't have the parking to do like a whole school-wide event. It would be repeated for different grade levels or grade level combinations. What, how are we making sure that there is parking to use the gym? Do you know what I mean?
But NAMs is not, NAMs is not a recommendation yet. There is no recommendation or option. We haven't, that's been, that's been out there. I mean, it's.
So that's one of my concerns with that. It's like, it is a property that has space inside to use, but I worry about the parking ramifications and trying to schedule use of it when something isn't happening at the elementary school, right? And that kinda like conflict over how many vehicles can be over there.
So your question is point on. That would be further ahead in the scope that we're at right now. Part of our goal coming here today was to answer some questions that some of our members and some of us, all of us are getting as we get closer to the new school, is what are we gonna do? So this was kinda give our community a vision of what we're seeing right now. It's not clear, it's not focused. We haven't, haven't talked to our solicitor yet in regards to what we need to be doing, but that will be taking place here soon. Cause PDE does have a process for relieving of buildings, we know that. And then the next thing is, if we do bring a 503-1C type of group in there to one of our schools, as we're referring to as Memorial, you know, we have to get that lease agreement, that contract all worked out, approved by them as our solicitors group, and then approved here as a board. But I'm not saying we're bringing that next week, obviously not. But it was just a little site, where we're heading to, alright? We've talked over a couple of years with this. We've had at least 13 meetings among this group over the last few years.
And at least 10 presentations.
And some site visits.
That's what I was gonna ask. Didn't Christ United came here, right?
Yes.
They come here three days.
That was awesome, yeah, it was great. I think, weren't you here, I think you were here, Jim, with them when they came? It was awesome, the little, the presentation. Is that who would be taking one of the, oh, that's good. That's awesome.
And that's in the plans. You know, again, they're not ready to present to us an agreement, but they're getting closer. And they're just trying to build their partnership up, ship up a little bit. But we're seeing that vision that came across, is like, we still have needs in this community and we have some properties that may meet some of those needs. And that was part of our ultimate goal.
Well, now I'm a little confused, cause I wanna get back up. Because you were saying, like, you wouldn't recommend that we be in the position of owning the property and leasing it out, being the landlord. So are we talking about a 501(c)(3)? Buying it? And then they lease it?
We, we.
Now I'm confused.
At that point.
Okay.
Dr. Walsh, from the very beginning we started, had said, and Dr. Kozinski said, we really don't wanna be in the landlord business, alright? But we have to get to this bridge, and we may not have that choice. Again, then it comes back to the nine of us to decide whether yea or nay. But I have nothing to present. You know, just we have a group, they're forming themselves, they're looking at one of our facilities. We've been approached by three contractors who were interested in these other properties. When they go up for a public auction, alright? So you know, we benefit, cause we have a competitive bid. It's my understanding that process is an open public auction, not a, not like contracted where it's sealed. That benefits us, alright? And the whole goal is that we have a timeline coming in, based on what we get a date, a firm date of when we take over the new elementary center. Again, I thank this group here. You may recognize some of them, other ones who are born and raised here. Their business owner is in town, their parents, they have children in this district. And kinda we pulled them together from their perspective, how they've been part of this community longer than I know myself, and their view of what they wanna see for Bethel Park in the future, alright? So, gentlemen, anybody else have anything to add? I think, any other questions?
I had just one question.
Yes, sir.
And I know some of it depends on RC, and we'll hear on the date, but do we have a? Yeah. Not to put all this on you, RC, but have we been thinking about what some of the milestones are in terms of, you know, when we wanna have these recommendations affirmed up? When the board needs to vote? And we push that over to our, you know, attorney that works on contracts?
To look at, we, for all intents and purposes, Franklin and Washington have been, that process has been started with the MOU with the municipality. I think the next two we need to look at in the recommendations for William Penn and for Lincoln. And those can be taken up in the next couple of sessions.
For the, for the two where they have an MOU, what else do we need to do to finalize that? Because I don't think the MOU is finalization or doesn't transfer ownership.
Rebecca question.
It is, Rebecca question. And I have to say, Megan, my predecessor, has been handling that. So I am going to check in with her.
Okay.
Exactly, I don't want to misspeak today. And I will report back to the board. I apologize, I don't have time.
Yeah, I mean, that one we've already, we've at least already cleared a path. We should probably get that off the table now, keep moving that forward.
So we'll get that timeline, cause you have to have the public hearings, public forums before we vacate the buildings. And I think there is a specific timeline.
Okay.
So we'll get that from her, maybe by our next meeting, if not, definitely for Megan.
Yeah. There's gonna be a lot of balls in the air that we gotta keep moving. So I think if we kinda work backwards and figure out all the decisions that have to be made, I think that'd be a good thing.
But just, again, to repeat, a lot of this here tonight was, there was a lot of questions within the community that members are beginning. We just wanna give some, everybody a little vision of what's will be taking place there.
Sure.
We'll tie in those specifics coming up over the next month or so.
Yeah, okay.
I thought of another question. And it might be part of maybe this Jefferson Foundation, I don't know. But was there conversation about a need for a space for teens to have a bona fide teen program? Like with supervision and mentoring and?
I think that's the rec department with the other building situations going on. He was.
Conversations have been had.
With the rec department, more than.
Right. With other.
Awesome.
Municipality.
Awesome.
Much as school district building.
Okay. It occurred to me, like, that sort of need, and I know the library's out of.
Right. We do know that the people that are looking, the 501(c)(3) that has been formed, I believe all the paperwork has been put in. We're really looking at the grants that they could get to consider going larger in adult daycare. And that is a need, we all know, in the community.
Okay.
That is large. So I believe he's focused more on that, and then the other components of that with SHIM and Meals on Wheels that adults in this community really need. So that's his main focus compared to, there's been other discussions about where teens can go and those kinds of things.
One of the things that I need to advise the board is just a consideration, and this is pressure on RC, is if, again, if we do not get our substantial completion, if we do not get our substantial completion for July of '26 or August of '26, there's a lot of detail work in the contracts that we would have to put in that is a contingency. And so a consideration that, you know, we're not gonna give up these buildings in August, then oops, what do we do?
Right, and Megan is aware of those situations. She has had conversations that have been relayed to that committee.
Just being realistic, RC.
RC.
Okay, so just to sum up, then, the board will then, in the next couple of months, be taking some action. First of all, thank you. I'm just wondering how many of you are signed up for the adult daycare? I wasn't sure if it was a self-serving move on your part to do it.
Don't worry, I was still enjoying my sport.
I know. Couldn't resist. But thank you all for shepherding this process. I'm sure that you were inundated with ideas and suggestions on what should happen and please don'ts and I wish it woulds kind of thing. So you fielding that and then bringing us some of the end result that's been distilled is really helpful. And where we're gonna go from here, of course, is we have to decommission these buildings according to state law. So that'll happen in the next couple of months, effective July or August of 2026.
July 36th.
And then the, we'd like to be able to make sure that the buildings are also moved into other people's responsibilities, whether it's going to auction and sold, or going to the municipality. They'll take ownership of those buildings and become responsible. Cause it's, it's important part of our long-term goals is to have plans and carry these through so that on August 1st, we have just three building campuses and not eight. So I'm really pleased that we have this much information to go on, and we're gonna take it from here. Yeah. And look forward to having you guys cut some ribbons with us. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we just have, Mr. Crombie had a request, so, gentlemen?
Yeah, I understand.
Come up here.
Get a photo outside. Outside, or you're saying outside?
It's, it's right here, we're here.
I'm in the back room.
I think at this time we have site logic with a little update on IMS project.
We're saying that we have to keep these buildings based on the elementary stuff
Thank you.
Good evening, I'll make this short and sweet, it sounds like it's RC's night, so
done, is to put the community in the apple flex. I guarantee it's on social media right now, that we're not gonna be done.
Awesome, thank you so much.
give him the mic as soon as I am done. So, just an update on phase three, we are actually still down in the lower level, we had some issues with the ceramic tile in the corridors once it went up. We realized that the die lot did not really match, it was very splotchy, so we ripped it all off, and along came the drywall, so we had to start all over again. So we are gonna be a couple of weeks late turning over downstairs, however, we did get a jump into the music suite to start some of the data storage room, and we have gotten into the auditorium, so we will still be done in August, even though we are going to be a couple of weeks late turning over, again, the lower level, but we wanted to look good, and it was what we needed to do. So, we tiled and re-tiled the corridor walls, as I mentioned, we are tiling currently the locker rooms and the showers, starting the plumbing fixture installation in there also, and we've completed the health rooms, and I believe they're getting ready to put the flooring down in the fitness room. In the auditorium, we have had, we moved out the stuff on the stage, we have started demoing the seating, and we, again, started the framing of the data storage room in the music suite, because that actually supports some of the rooms downstairs as well, and that's why we had to kind of get in there early. So just some pictures for you, showing you some of the finished locker rooms, and then the actual showers and restroom facilities within those locker rooms. Again, these are the walls that we tiled and re-tiled, so, again, a lot of work down there and coming along and coming together very nicely. These are one of the health rooms that are done, and that's an older room of one of the other, an older picture of one of the other health rooms. So that is ready to go, just starting doing some final cleaning. And then this is the auditorium, and then, again, starting to remove the seating in there, and then the picture at the top right is some of the framing that we're doing in the music area, and then as soon as we're down, done downstairs, the district will flip the music department downstairs while we do the upstairs, and they will become the health rooms at the beginning of the new school year, so. The roofing project, we have started, we did, however, start in a different area than intended to just because of some existing conditions, so we are actually doing roofing over the academic area. We are relocating classrooms as we go, so that the work that's being done on the roof, there are no classrooms or kids below, that is being coordinated on a weekly basis with the district. Had a few bumps in the road, some drywall did get damaged, some casework did get damaged, and we will replace that over the summer. We've worked out and found what the issue was, so should not have that issue again. So, continuing over the academic, with the testing that is coming up, we will jump to the auditorium then, so that there will be no disruption to the testing, and we will work with Raquel on that for all the timing. Again, this is just a picture of one of the areas that has started, again, over the academic area. And Garland is there every day inspecting, and they do issue reports on a weekly basis that we do send to the district as well, so, again, they're, they're inspecting for the year, thirty-year warranty. Any questions?
How long do you expect, you're saying like a two-week delay in the tile, the re-tiled, the, all of that, we're about, the music department will move over?
I'm guessing probably the third week in April is when they'll probably do that flip. We have the mover set up to help move some of the stuff downstairs, so, again, I know my project manager is working closely with Raquel on that, so that's what I'm estimating right now, but like I said, we've already gotten a jump in there and got into the auditorium, so I don't see anything on the back end of it not getting done on time.
Dr. Walsh, we don't see, like, where we have to have any...
Nope.
Okay, and, like, any missing, okay, thank you.
I don't, nope.
Any other questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Hello, RC? The goodness part, right?
I lost your presentation.
What's that?
Do you want me to say that I lost your presentation?
Yeah. Allow me to introduce myself, my name is John Doe. I don't know who this RC character is you're referring to, but... Okay, so, a picture update of what we have been working on, forget what button to hit, here we go. And I apologize for these pictures, the day we took them, the lighting was weird, we, they were kept washing out, so, they kind of look weird, but that's what I got. So just overall building progress, what you're looking at here, obviously, is classroom wings, ENF, here's the front portion of the building, LGI cafeteria, gymnasium area. So the exciting thing here is all the foundations are now in the ground. It's been a long road to hoe, but it's a milestone that, that we did hit. Classroom wings, as you can see here, the exterior and interior framing, but making a big push for the exterior building to get the building envelope on and wrapped up, so we can start drying the building out. So that, that has begun, and that is moving along really well. All the slabs are now poured in these two classroom wing, wings, and this portion of the connector there. This slab down here in these pictures is not poured, but that was poured today, so. Classroom wings have all, all their slabs in, in interior framing, and MEP roughens have started. So, okay, in this picture, here's the gymnasium, storm center, the scale of this picture can seem kind of awkward, but that, those walls are about fifty percent of the way up, they're about twelve, fifteen feet, they go to about twenty-eight, thirty feet, so. That's moving along. Here, again, is, in the background, there's the gym, so here's your LGI space, cafeteria, there's our mud, there's more of our mud, there's more of our mud. So here's, here's the exciting stuff that's, that's really happened since we last met. All the, all the prime contractors, other than the kitchen equipment installer, have mobilized and are onsite actively working. So all the MEPs, the roughens are, are going in, as I race past a couple of pictures. This is area A on the ground floor, obviously, so you can see that the sprinkler guys are in, coffer and dock work for the HVAC, HVAC systems, looking down into area C, which is Main Street, I believe. Area D, again, action going on there. And area E, this is where a lot, a lot of the work has progressed the fastest, so interior walls are going in, wall roughen, above-ceiling roughen, topping off the areas in the corridors, the corridor ceilings have most of the mechanicals in them, so it's hard to get the drywall up when all the mechanicals are up, so we're topping off now, so that's what you see there. Again, another shot down E, another E, so, looks, looks like a ten pounds of crap in a five-pound bag, but, that's, that's what we gotta do. Area F, again, we're moving in, you can see some of the MEP mechanicals starting to go into the other wing as well. As I mentioned before, our final foundation systems and parts and pieces have been installed finally. Stair tower in area C complete, I know we've seen this picture before, but our, our main electrical roughens, undergrounds have started, and all the kitchen undergrounds. This picture's kind of neat, as I included, just to get the scale, this is the kitchen area, and all those little white pipe stub ops are all the plumbing undergrounds and sinks and floor drains and whatnot, so that, that's a lot to get in there. Again, ten pounds in a five-pound bag, so, that was a challenge, we're glad to get past that, and you can see this monstrous pile of duck bank here for the main electrical feed into the building too, so. Again, Jim Walls, this, this is a little bit better picture, you might get a scale of the gym, I mean, that's, that's a crane, that's sitting in the middle of your gym floor, and it looks like a toy, so. Gym Walls, first floor area E, I tried to get a picture of all the slabs, so that, again, that's, that's kind of a milestone, is getting the slabs poured, you know, it opens up a ton more work, so, like I said, all the slabs, as of today, all the slabs in the classroom wings are poured. Shot of your courtyard, want to include one picture of the courtyard every time, because it's kind of neat how to see, you know, it looks big, then it looks small, then it looks big, then it looks small. Retaining wall three, we're backfilling it, the backfill we're doing now is just the area between the, the stone or the wall, the earth wall, and the concrete panels, there's like eighteen inches of stone back there, but included a picture of this machine here, this is a high-reach excavator, you don't see one of them every day, so it's kind of Upcoming work, as I said, we're, we're running hot and heavy on mechanical roughens, the steel erection will resume next week in the upper-level areas where we seen by the gym and in the cafeteria and the LGI, and then we'll start pouring those slabs on grades up in that area, and then hopefully, by the next time we meet, we're putting roof on, on area E. So, we have, just to give you a scale, we have any, any day, we have anywhere between sixty and eighty workers down on site, so we're, we're, we're full bore, we're hitting, we're hitting the summer running now, and we are over three hundred days without a recorded point, so. Any questions on the pictures?
Completion date.
Completion date, so I don't, we are in a mode of recovery schedule, up until, like, now, it's been hard to get, to hit where we are exactly, well, we all knew we were behind schedule because of pyrite, we were still dealing with the pyrite, and that's another milestone. We, we are out of the, the building footprint, we're done with pyrite, we're still gonna encounter some around the building as we finish the site utilities, there's about eight hundred feet of water line we got to put in, in the new main power feed into the building. So we're not out of the pyrite completely, but we're out of the footprint of the building, so now we could gauge, okay, there'll, there'll be no more delays, knock on wood, but I can't tell you, right now, we're looking at, like, end of October date, I know that's scary, I don't want anyone to get scared. We are in recovery mode, and I will tell you right now, we've sucked out about eight weeks in the little bit of work on the schedule we've done. Some of the things we've done, like I said, when I was going through pictures, is changing the sequence of how we're, we're finishing out the building, instead of going four by four, we're kind of taking it area by area now, because that's kind of what's available to us, so, just by doing that, we already picked up quite a bit of time, so. I'm still confident we can hit our date.
Okay.
All the, all the primes are still confident we're gonna hit our date, we just got to work through the schedule, we got to do it intelligently, and...
I just want to make sure it's possible.
Oh, yeah.
It is possible to hit that date.
Yes, it's possible, and I don't want to, I don't want to go any farther than that, because I don't, I don't want to, I understand everything that's riding on this, and I, I don't want to give any bad information at this point, so. Hopefully, in a month from now, after we run through, you know, we're meeting weekly to massage this schedule and develop a recovery schedule, hopefully, a month from now, I could, we could confidently and say that we are going to hit our July deadline, and I'll have the schedule and everyone sign, all the primes sign off to, to prove it.
Okay.
But thirty years in construction, I, I think, I'm confident we can hit it.
Can we talk about a few of these change orders that are on our agenda?
You bet.
Maybe you have the best information, so there's probably three in particular, is the nurses' suite revisions, which I thought we already addressed some of those before...
Yeah, this, I'll, I'll take full responsibility for that, I was kind of processing them as they were coming in from the different primes, I sort of bundled them all together, so it didn't seem like units were, kept getting punched for the same reason. So we, we have approved the electricians and the mechanicals' change order for those, for this ASI, and this is the general contractors' portion of that, so, after this, there'll be no more nurses' revision ASI four change order.
Okay, so the, that's what the first one is associated with, is...
Is the revisions for the nurses' suites in ASI four.
Right.
Okay, so that's the walls, doors hardware. This will finally put that ASI to bed.
Okay, and then there's, down below, there's the ASI eleven mechanical, two, two there that's for mechanical and electrical revisions, is that also related to the nurses' station?
No, this is a, a separate ASI.
Okay.
The mechanical port, the heranics portion of that, HVAC dash zero zero four, the majority of that was for an additional, let me call it, brain fart, the unit, your heating element in, in the room, I can't believe I'm drawing a blank here, but that, that majority of that was for one of those was missed, it was added, had to be, wasn't on the bid documents. And the electrical portion, a lot of them, those monies are related to the speaker revisions and some circuitry that had to be routed to the emergency power system.
Those revisions we made, or they just were omitted in the design?
They were omitted from the design.
Okay.
That's a big number to be omitted from the design. Over twenty-six thousand dollars.
Any more of those red ones coming in? Yeah. You and Eric's complete. I'm working on them. Yeah, we ain't complaining about that one, if you noticed. Yeah, she skipped, can I, can I give my two cents on that one? Yeah, yeah, please. Anyway, yeah, so that, that, that deduct one there, the bid drawings showed the use of a, an edge plate on the steel beams to pick up some steel, the steel decking, support to steel decking, during shop drawing review, they were deemed unnecessary because the width of the beam flange itself was enough to make up the distance to pick up the edge of deck there, so, that explains that one. I can't believe I'm drawing a blank here. But that, that majority of that was for one of those was missed. It was added. It had to be, wasn't on the bid documents. And the electrical portion, a lot of them, those monies are related to the speaker revisions and some circuitry that had to be. Routed to the emergency power system.
Those revisions we made, or they just were omitted in the design?
They were omitted from the design.
Okay.
Over twenty-six thousand dollars.
Any more of those red ones coming in?
Yeah.
Your hair is complete.
I'm working on them.
Yeah, we ain't complaining about that one, if you noticed.
Yeah, she skipped a, can I, can I give my two cents on that one?
Yeah, please.
Anyway, yeah, so that, that, that deduct one there, the bid drawings showed the use of a. An edge plate on the steel beams to pick up some steel, the steel decking, support to steel decking. During shop drawing review, they redeemed unnecessary because the width of the beam flange itself was enough to make up the distance to pick up the edge of deck there. So. That explains that one.
Can I ask a question regarding budget, since he's standing here? On the back of one of our things, we got a summary, and the change net, or the ones, one, three, and four included in the change numbers on the back of the summary. It's where the change orders are, the last page.
The backside.
The change order summary?
Yeah, so we have net change by change order, line two, last page. So it is divided by, I'm going to guess subcontract. The projected total is two point one million. Is that including tonight's changes, or does that not include tonight's changes?
That includes tonight's changes, that total.
And then that means we're on, we're only at about one point one million left, correct? Roughly. So we're between one and one point one million.
Yeah.
How much more do we? I mean, are we through the drawings to make sure that there's no other issues on those?
I would, I, I can't sit here and say at one hundred percent no, but I would imagine so, yeah.
Okay.
There, there are still change orders out there that rough numbers have not been. Calculated but reviewed for the pyrite work and some of the bigger items from the pyrite, so that you, you're still going to have some change orders that are coming through.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Somebody else? RC, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Appreciate it. At this time, we're open for public comments on agenda items. Going once, please. All right. Move on. The curriculum committee, Mr. Scalzo. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Okay, we have one item. The Board of School Directors approves administration's recommendation to permit Elizabeth Wells to attend the 2025 Annual Pennsylvania Association Federal Program Coordinators Conference at Hershey, PA from May eleventh through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the cost of one thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents. Does anybody have any questions? I'd like to move this to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Personnel committee, Mr. McGregor, sir.
All right, tonight, there are six items underneath personnel. I'll read them all. Number one, acceptance of resignations. Number two, appointment of personnel. Number three, change of assignment. Number four, approval of unpaid leave of absence. Number five, approval of summer help for the custodian, custodial maintenance department. And number six, approval of job description. Are there any discussions, questions? If there are none, I'd like to move these six to the consent agenda.
Okay. Here are none, so don't, so be it. We have facilities, Mr. Christensen, sir.
So in our facilities, we have two items. One is a permission to issue a bid request for two projects, and another one is related to the change orders that we just discussed. On the request for bids, just one question. On this. The, the paving, so Black Hawk Drive, there's the. Church Road parking lot. Is that the YMCA, the part of the YMCA that we own, or which one is that?
That's the one that is parallel to the Turfs, not the YMCA.
Oh, okay.
Because we, we own portion of the YMCA parking lot. That is not part of the bid. That will be a separate project, probably later date when we maybe look at IMS or so forth.
Okay, and then the other one is the athletic entrance and by the stadium then?
Correct. That's the Broad Street parking lot.
Main parking lots?
Correct.
Okay.
Are we not doing perky?
We're, we're not doing perky until we decide or figure out what's happening with behind the stadium and, and whatnot. It's not in a, a bad condition.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on these two items?
Just trash removal. So is there no consortium with districts? You're no complete, no?
No.
And nothing with municipalities contract that more favorable rate?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so it's an independent, we're on our own.
We'll send out an RFP, see who responds and make sure we're, it'll be in the RFP in terms of complying with the ordinance with the municipality. But it's a open market.
We'll anticipate probably paying more since everybody else is.
We'll wait and see.
Wait and see. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not. I'd like to move these to the consent agenda.
Okay, very good. Finance committee, Mrs. Walsh Turner.
We have April twenty twenty-five salary and bills, March twenty twenty-five financial report, budgetary transfers, payment for the new elementary school school project. Number invoices, one through nine, none are the change orders we just approved. Payment for Independence Middle School Phase Three renovations to Site Logic. Payment for Independence Middle School Phase Two to Site Logic. Approval of student services contracts with CARES of Western Pennsylvania, Keystone Education Staffing, Independent Speech Language Pathology, and Presence Learning, Inc. An agreement with substitute teacher services. Acceptance of Remake Learning Days Mini Grant, Items Declared Unused and Innecessary, and Kennedy Driving School. I have a question on number eight. Are we changing services?
Yes, that is the recommendation. So we met with multiple subservices. Right now, we are in a position where we need to streamline our substitutes. STS gave us the best option. They have a program where they'll actually run every morning the subs and where they go throughout the building. Right now, that's in-house. It's on us. We do that. So by them doing that, that frees up a lot of time for our administration team. So that was a big reason why we're going with STS.
And they're going to also do the paras and those.
Correct, everything, everything that Precision does right now, they will take on. And they will be meeting with our current subs who work for Precision to see if they want to come over, so they will do all that legwork as well.
So that won't be on us. Okay. That's a great. That'll, that'll free up administration and secretarial staff in the morning.
And that's, that was the number one goal. Yeah.
And then Kennedy.
With this, with this provider, are former employees who are subbing still have the same ability to do that? There's no conflict?
No conflict with Peasars or retirement. They are still a third-party company where they can sub, and it will not affect their pension.
Okay, and then the other one is Kennedy Driving School. We're just allowing them to use. Parking lot or the classroom?
Yeah, this actually is just because of the state law that we're, we're the licensed certified agency by which students can earn their driver's license, but we don't provide the service. It's Kennedy School. So because of that connection, we are have, we're obligated to accept or board has to approve these candidates to provide that service. So you, you have all of the. All of the instructors certifications to approve.
And then they do the, the coursework either online or at the community center, correct?
Right, right, right.
So we're not providing buildings either?
No, no, this is just, just approving the, approving the instructors.
Okay, if anybody else has any questions. I move one to eleven to the consent agenda.
No other questions. Move on. Then policy committee, Mrs. Hoppe.
Okay, we have three items, only one. Number one, the revision to policy two, five, two concerning dating violence will move to the consent agenda or to the, to the agenda next week for voting. Second item is revision to policies, and there is an exhaustive list of policies. I'm not going to go through them all. And the third item is the discussion of a cell phone policy, and I'm not sure why it looks like this. Because there's only a section of it displayed.
I just posted the part that you and I talked about this week. So it was, there was a, a discussion in our last month's meeting about this policy. Got some feedback, and then you and I exchanged emails about the fact that students already have one-to-one devices in the high school. So we should just make sure we're explicit, saying that you can't use your phone in the instructional areas because you already have a device for that, for all the same purposes.
Got it. So basically, what's in front of us is the revision to what we had last week.
I have a question on number two. These are all PSBA. We're not adding to them or distracting, removing from them. They're all PSBA recommendations.
Most of these are revisions. And so wherever they came from, I do not believe we are adding to them by ourselves.
And the only one that would have some modifications would be the AR, number two forty-one AR. We're trying to continue to refine procedures related to the changes that the board has approved last year to pay for field trips K to eight. And so we, we, just as this has rolled out this year, we've tried to make sure we put some guardrails up so it doesn't get to be a little bit out of control, like taking ten adults for one field trip, those kinds of guardrails. So we're just putting these into administrative policy so teachers have some guidelines.
I guess that was one of the ones that I saw that was like out of differentiation.
Yes.
And then eight fifteen point two, the educational use of student-owned technology and smart devices. That is incorporating the new cell phone policy within that policy.
And I think, is one oh five point one something we're?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that's the other one. That one has. The board's aware of some issues we've had this year with curriculum decisions teachers have made that nobody else was aware of, and parents were objecting and concerned about. So we, we've tightened up this policy, so it's very specific about how the process by which you can use instructional, supplementary instructional materials in the classroom. As long as you follow the process, we shouldn't have any objections or concerns moving forward.
Any other questions, discussion?
Is the one on fraud a new policy for us, or is that also a revision?
It's, it actually did not exist, so it is new. It did, it's a PSBA policy, but we never adopted it for whatever reason.
Oh.
And it was recommended by our auditors recently that we should have this policy in place. So it's, we just received it from PSBA and put it out there for, for public reading.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we should have it. We definitely should have that in place. Very important. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. McGregor.
So it's easy. Thank you very much. We have one section for other. Mrs. Janisak, would you mind?
Sure. A selection of voting delegates for the twenty twenty-five PSBA delegate assembly. So because we are a second-class district, we can appoint up to three individuals to attend this assembly. I do want to point out that in prior years, there was always an option to do this virtually. This year, there is no virtual option. Whoever is going to be the delegate needs to be at the conclusion of the PSBA conference in the Poconos on, I think it's October twenty-first. They do not necessarily need to attend the entire conference, but that is quite a drive for one day of voting. It is my intention to request that I be allowed to go to the PSBA conference. I have been recently asked by the PSBA president to serve on the Governance and Policy Committee and the Platform Committee. And I think both of those committees are related to the delegate assembly, so it would make sense unless there are objections or four others of you would like to go. So it would be my intention to say that I would like to go to the PSBA conference as well as stay for the delegate assembly.
I vote to send you to the Poconos.
There you go.
One way, what about bringing her back?
There you go. You know what?
One-way expenses?
If you keep, if you keep buying me the, like, thirty-dollar cheeseburgers, I'm happy to stay. That's no problem. So if anybody else wants to go, like, I am always prepared to take vacation if I need to, to attend the PSBA conference. So I, it's not a problem on my end, but if anybody else would like to go, I know Christina, you were thinking about it at one time. It is, it is really great. I think it would be really beneficial if we did have two people there, because there's so many conflicting sessions, right? You have a session time, and there's like ten. You can't possibly, even though I try to beep up everywhere, can't possibly get everything. So if, if someone would like to go, it is, it is a very good event. You learn a lot. There's a lot of networking with our colleagues. There's a lot of interaction as well with the PSBA staff and leadership and a lot of information. There's a lot of networking. And talking with other school directors about what's going on in their districts and the challenges they're facing and how they're handling them, and so, so many good ideas. Because of the, a lot of the superintendents are attending the PASA conference, which, Dr. Walsh? I would say if you'd like to go to it, that would be a wonderful thing for you to go to. There's all kinds, there's always someone there talking about what's happening in that leadership group of the superintendents who are doing like the Portrait of a Graduate and all of that, like the new way of looking at high school and how it relates to careers and what employers need and the skills employers need, and how do we adjust what we do? And all kinds of things about the future of education. So trying to sell somebody on going to the conference.
Volunteers?
It's, it's, I just can't believe. Go to the con, come to the conference with me, Buffy.
We'll put our names in the hat.
Conferences are great. I can't believe anybody wants to go. It's awesome. Okay, anyway. So I volunteer to be our delegate assembly and make the arduous journey at huge, huge, huge personal expense and inconvenience, even though I don't want to, to go to the Poconos and be your delegate.
Turn a little bit more. Okay, we'll, we'll put that up for next month and.
There you go.
And we'll bring you back to. Thank you. Public comments? I got to offer. I'm told I have to offer. He yells at me if I don't. Board comments? Uh-oh, very quick. No? I'd just share some condolences. Leah Nagle, our secretary, Don Ben Franklin's mother passed away last week. Just on behalf of the board and district, extend our condolences and sympathy to her and her family. Motion due in, John?